Father God, we turn to you this morning. We're mindful and thankful for our country and the freedoms we have. We pray for those in leadership all around the world. We just pray that we continue to have peace in this land of America. We pray for wisdom today as we make decisions for the county. We ask you to protect those that wear badges and uniforms and keep us safe. Direct the spread of harm. Pray in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have kind of a skeleton crew today. Kevin's got a family matter down in Florida with his father, and Roy was diagnosed with COVID. So skeleton crew here. So first item of business we have is the meetings for both our regular session and our joint session. And all the arrangements, directions, if not, I'll undertake a motion.
Still moved.
I have a motion. I'll second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Payroll, calendar year 2021. I pay a 15. Total is $245,181.81. We had 145 claims total, $400.
Still moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Scott, right to you.
Quick here. Good morning.
Table backwards again?
It's before I get to the table. As of this morning, there's 70 inmates in jail. 26 are pretrial superior. 18 pretrial circuit. 12 F6 and 9 DOC. It was pretty busy last week. We had been down in the low 60s, but I don't know, something in the air. Full moon, something. But yeah, activity was up a lot in the last week. DOC has been doing some good catch-up as far as getting, letting us bring people down. And so we've been kind of keeping those numbers down as well. The only other thing going on is everything's kicking up right now with architects, contractors, everybody. We have a meeting tomorrow with the company that does all the door locks and stuff. It's all getting into the nitty-gritty stuff. As far as Elavatis has got, I think, until September to get done with their their final drawings for the contractors. So we met with them twice now. Last time being last week with the gentleman from Amoresco, who would be, he's going to be the construction manager, so to speak. So yeah, when they start asking you how many electrical outlets you want and where you need data ports and all these other things, things are starting to get real as far as getting those things finalized. So I think a good part of our week is going to be spent trying to make those fine detailed decisions for those type of things. From what I've heard, the contracts are all finalized with the contractors. And they're ready to proceed with ordering stuff that they need, get it on the books. Some of the things are, the lead times on those are a while. So the original plan was we could start working on HVAC stuff yet this year. And we're looking at construction stuff probably being January of 2022, going through at that time. So I think that's kind of what we're looking at. Until we hear back on parts orders and stuff like that, we'll have a better understanding. Amoresco said they will provide us and you guys more of a timeline of what we're looking forward to as far as phases and how that whole project will lay out. Because they have to coordinate that with us. It's easy if it's a new site build where obviously we have to continue to maintain a jail in a secure location while they're doing construction. So there's got, there's a lot of moving parts that we have to coordinate while they're doing that. And when they take out our intake area, we got to make a temporary one and all those type of things. So we'll be, we'll be busy with a lot of that stuff. So other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you, Scott?
Yep, thank you.
I take it Sean's out on the road.
Correct, he is out on the road soon. I've got his notes.
You can come in and do yours and his together.
That's fine. There we go. Well, good morning. Yep, and as is apparent, Sean is out on the road with the crews. They are still working in full force on the chip seal. According to Sean's notes, we're looking to be about halfway through on this work through the south part of the county and they're moving on the north. I know they're out on 301, 700 East right now going up through Craigville.
Somebody asked me they did half of 800 East County line.
Yeah, so they're going to be, they're out on there. So yeah, I would expect that they're going to be finishing up that area here. So they're, they're working on that pretty consistently. Their goal certainly is to try to be done by Labor Day this year. Probably no later than that. Just a quick update here. We got two tractors that are down and still waiting on parts. Right now with the shortage of materials and parts, right now we've had to suspend the ditch mowing work until we can get that repaired down to those tractors. So we're just unable to do that work until those parts come in. And then the final note from Sean here is just, just a plea to farmers just for safety reasons, cut back corn at these intersections. I know there's questions on right-of-way times. They feel that they need to farm up close. Well, we've had a lot of areas that get planted once the corn's up. I see a lot of farmers starting to cut it back because they receive complaints. Certainly it is a liability issue to the farmer and certainly a safety concern to the public. So just implore them to look at that from the eyes of the public and cut that back as soon as possible.
Do we have any kind of lead time on the parts?
I do not. I could leave that to Sean and see what time we need on some of these materials.
I was going to say, I'm not sure the age of these units and where we go with the replacement rotations.
Right, it doesn't help.
Yep, now I'll make that note for Sean there.
Thank you.
All right, on to some of my items here. Just an update for you. Application was submitted to Endot last week for our community crossings matching grant. My second grant application of the year. I wouldn't expect to hear a response from Endot on those for at least two to three months. They are very swamped with work at this point. So we certainly wouldn't expect that project to be done this year. We may find out late this fall and I'll try to get a bid and look into 2022 timeframe if that is awarded. And in the finance authority, we did submit a transportation and stormwater grant for the area of Murray. The current application was turned in and plenty of time for that. I did get responses back from SRF that they had everything that they needed. Actually, I took a few photographs of that area as well. Unlike with Endot where everything's kind of prescriptive, I'm expecting with this grant to be more of a negotiation as far as how much funds they have. If we're selected, they may say, here's how much money we have available to you. How much can you get done? So the 10% that we've committed to for the project may be negotiated as far as the scope of work. But if they're willing to work with us, then we're at least going to get something to get that project forward. So that I will hopefully find out in the next 30 days is what I'm hoping for.
The same people that worked with you and regional services?
Correct, yep. So the same director there. It's a slightly different division. So there's a Sarah Hudson that I've been in communication with, with SRF. So hopefully we hear back here this month and I can give you some announcement in September. So that's my, that's certainly my goal. Endot quarter the reports. Those are just the reports we do on any of our federal aid projects. Those that were completed and turned in Endot. I do have a meeting with them on August 26th to review the progress on those projects. And then there's a couple scheduled items I need to push on. So there's just some dates that need to get moved around. There's some completion dates that need to get submitted to the state so they know where we're at. So I'm working with them on those. Item four is kind of future bridge and road projects. I've highlighted two of them. You'll see them bold, but just kind of a, just a checklist of a couple of projects on our horizon right now. Bridge 65, I've talked about that one before. That's a bridge on Jeffaro, just north of our South County line. It's listed as a one-way bridge. It's certainly a good goal for us to look at replacement at some point. And I'm bringing these up because I'll probably look at doing consulting contracts on at least maybe two of these in the future. This one's got minimal guard rail, really just like a six or eight inch curve on it. It's had significant scour and deterioration. Bridge 72 is another one on 300 West, north of Southern Wells. It's just, actually just north of 5 South. There's quite a bit of scour exposing the footers on that bridge. Substructure and channel are both poor, are very poor. Sorry, four of eight, but it's a poor structure. Certainly if we have a major load limit on it, it's going to be a problem for the southern part of the county because 3 West is just so heavily traveled. Bridge 80 actually is on a little dead end. It's a 550 West, about three tenths of a mile south of 100 South. Bridge has a posted load limit of 12 tons. It actually has a slab top that's actually convex. It's actually curved up on that. That's why it's got the load limiting on it. Unfortunately, it's just a very low-traveled road. There's a cemetery nearby. Not a high priority project, but it's kind of been in that condition for as long as I'm aware of. I think it was just built with a slab that's about 50% too thin. That's why it's got that curve to it. And so hence the load limiting on it. Bridge 108, this is actually south of Uniondale. The reason I like looking at this one, it's not that old. And by not that old, I mean it is a 40-year-old structure. It's an aluminum arch. Unfortunately, it's got, it's deflected underneath roadway. There's really not enough cover on that when it was installed. So it's got a load limit posted on that as well of 16 tons. The reason that's a bit of a concern for me is that that would be a nice access route for fire response to Uniondale from Bluffton. So that being the most direct route, it makes it, it's so fire and ladder trucks can't take that route. So fire department knows that. So that would push that structure up on my list as far as a future replacement because that's a limiting direction. And then the last item on here as far as the future project listing is this County Home Road and 300 South intersection. I actually have a draft schematic from a firm that's been putting proposals together for this one. Looking at trying to deal with the site distance by raising that intersection up, taking some of the hills off on the approach, north and south on County Home Road. That'll be a better, it'll be a better project overall when that's done as far as an intersection. I don't particularly like how that intersection operates as far as what your site distances are. No, it's not, not a great corner.
But we need to have the cornering property owners in unison.
Yep, so we're, we've got to have to work with the property owners at least some, some extent. Depending on what the support is of the neighbors, depends on what we'd be able to do as far as the funding source. If they'll work with us, then we'd be able to do it significantly faster and probably at lower cost to the county overall. It's not, it's not a great candidate for federal aid because of the size of the project. Based on the scope that I have right now, we could get the design speeds through that intersection up to 45, which is really where it needs to be for that road section, certainly through the curve to the north and then now through this corner. That would make that really ideal. It'd be a good, good project overall. So those are kind of some projects we're looking at. I may be bringing proposals from firms for two or maybe even three of them, depending on where, where I am with the Lit Bridge and Road account for 2022. So just a, just an update from that standpoint. Item number five, I actually have a proposal for you here. I wasn't sure if I'd have that when I wrote these notes up. But county highway design standards are desperately in need of an update. The official documented standards for the county roads are from the 1960s and they haven't had a change in their office in any substantial sense since that timeframe. Sorry. With the draft version of the local road safety plan that NERC has prepared for us, I'd like to consider updating our standard details to look at the safety aspects that we're seeing in the county. The types of accidents we're having. What do our road designs need to be to try to meet that? To try to address the accident types that we have. I want to try to do a top-down evaluation of those standards to kind of address that. To do this, I'm proposing working with Derek Fredrickson from Engineering Resources to draft a set of standard construction details for the county and to review the local road safety plan with myself and Trey Faust of NERC. We may bring in some of the school districts as well or even Farm Bureau at some of the standard details. If we're going to do standard detail changes that are county-wide, they're going to affect the farming community. And so I think there's some design techniques, design details that I would like to see done. But I'd like to get some endorsement from the local Farm Bureau for those changes before we try to implement them. Estimated cost for this is not to exceed of $12,900 and I would recommend that this come from the Lit Bridge account.
And if we approve it, you'll start it when?
I'll notify them and we can start that this year. And hopefully before Christmas, we'll have a set of standard details that we could present for approval.
But you will get a group of individuals together and talk about this?
We need to.
Okay, good.
Yep, so this won't be done in a vacuum. And we'll reach out to area plan. In fact, part of the reason for working with Derek is that he's been the engineer record with the town of Austin for some time. Our goal is to try to create a set of both urban and rural details that would be for the areas around the periphery of both Bluffton and Austin. And so that's why we, I recommend working with Derek. He's got municipal design experience that would be helpful. So, and this isn't, this isn't just creating details out of thin air. It's not just our pipe drain. We're going to be grafting details from Allen County, Adams County, surrounding communities to make sure that we're at least consistent. But we want to have an eye towards this safety plan. That's our justification and reasoning for doing any of it. I mean, why change any of it if everything's fine? The, the road safety plan says it's not fine. So we're going to create a response to that.
I would make a motion to approve that.
Motion, I'll second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, appreciate that. I have, just to keep that on here, my right-of-way dedications. I don't have any signed right-of-ways here.
I have three.
You have three, okay. Minor subdivisions are the, which road is it said it is?
700 South, Oak Road and 400 North.
Okay, yeah, so those are some minor subs. Split of both.
Cool.
Still moved.
And it's not on my notes, but I have this giant green notebook here in front of me. This showed up in an overnight package. This is the preliminary engineering report. The Regional Sewer District is going to be having a number of hearings for future project areas. It'll be in the newspaper later this week when those dates will be. But I have a copy of that in my office. The superintendent will have one as for the sewer districts. Eleanor Brown will have one. And one that'll be taken onto the library later this week before that goes out. So there's a lot of buzz, a lot of business going on, so. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other questions for me?
No, sir, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. I received an email that we emailed out. Wow. Is that just my signature or everyone's?
Just yours. It is for expenditure, expenditures for the second quarter. They expended $141,835.
I'm doing a motion, a lot will be decided.
Still moved.
Aye? Two, zero.
Initial jail funding. We just need to talk about that because even though where you want me to pay it out of, the initial thought was to pay it out of the ARP fund, but we can't do that until we have actual itemized billing even for a, just a cash flow.
What do you think our dur, the duration of the amount of money needed before it can be recharged? We, I mean, are we talking six months, nine months, 12 months?
I don't know. I've never dealt with funding before.
I have either.
Yeah, so I, I.
Are you okay with the reinvestment money as long as you get paid back? Or is that kind of limiting you with what you're doing on South Adams Street?
I did get the other million Friday.
Okay, so you've got, you've got the full amount at this point. Now, you know, the schedule as far as the Adams Street, we know roughly when those invoices are going to come in. So those, you've got some rough dates and dollar amounts essentially for that commitment for the Hoocher Highway project. We know where we're pulling our money for. 200, 200 South was essentially a commitment from them. There's about $700,000 total there, so.
But that's not for a while.
That's not for a while. So most likely you're going to get all that money back and pay back when you close on the bond, which would be probably at the end of construction. Construction guys here behind me, but I'd say that you're, you should be all right with that one. There's the other project that we had that I sent you. It was the Hoocher Highway, 200 South. 200 South is really the lesser of the, of the three. I think the other one was.
County Home Road.
County Home Road and 450.
Yeah, so that'd be that curb correction project, County Home Road. That one's still, that one's 2023. So that should be, you're going to, you're just using some of that money. So if you've got three and you're just using this as a payment, you should be all right. If you're not, as long as you've got enough, you can carve out that Hoocher Highway. This Hoocher Highway, you're going to pay upfront. So all that has got to come out probably by the end of next year, I believe, 22. Is it 20? The date's, I'm sorry.
What was his amount based on that? I didn't have that in front of me. Do you know when you sent that? So I can just go to it. I've got two million dollars from you.
The 28.
Yeah, there it is, 28.
There's 1.3 for.
Yeah, ARP Adams Streets, or the Hoocher Highway Adams Street will come out in May of '22 and October of '22. It'll just be one ARP invoice.
1.3.
Yes, and that was estimated at just 1.3 million.
So if we've got 750, then we're talking here, correct?
But for 2021, it's 2,050,000. Each month we have another bit due to Amoresco. So for 2021, it starts at 750 in August and then we have another in September, October, November and December for a total of 2,050,000 in 2021.
3, so it's 900. It just gives us a reason to do this ongoing thing going. That would be the, I would suggest that. Suggest it.
That makes the most sense to me.
Can we make that a motion?
Yes, sir. Still moved.
I'll second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Two, zero.
I skipped over the plaza request. Jason Bourne from Uniondale Fire Department would like to use the courthouse steps in Plaza area right in front of the courthouse on September 11th, which is a Saturday. He has multiple area fire departments who would like to come and use his steps to honor the firefighters who perished in the towers on September 11th. He originally wanted it from 8 to 11, but the plaza is already obligated for the farmers market. So I talked to Mike Jr. and he said they could be in there like at 1:30. So Jason said that would be fine. He would use it probably for three hours.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we come to the highway garage resolutions. There are several things that need to be done before we can, that are necessary for lease financing. The first is petition to taxpayers. We need to circulate petitions, get 50 signatures of people that are in favor of the project. The person who circulates the petition must sign it and also have it notarized at the end. It can be county employees, it can be whoever.
What's the deadline that the signatures will buy?
This should be back in my office by Wednesday, the 4th. That's what it is. No later than Wednesday, August 4th.
Wow.
Wow. I know. Also, a resolution from the Board of Commissioners determining need. This resolution makes a preliminary finding that there is a need for the project to move forward. You also need to, the commissioners need to appoint three people as directors for the building corporation. They must be at least 18 years old, not an employee of the county or spouse or partners. So there's a resolution for that and another resolution for reimbursement of the board. So if the county were to advance funds for the highway project, those costs could be reimbursed. So two resolutions.
So the first one is determining to have the adequate amounts signatures to support the project by Wednesday, the 4th. And the other one is to have a resolution.
To reimburse.
To reimburse. The other one, is that a separate one, to have three people?
That is on the first resolution.
That's on the first one because we don't have three people. But according to Roy, he did say we can prove that the three people will be willing to accept, be nominated, but also to accept. So due to time constraints. Those three people, if they would accept, would be brought to the board's attention next meeting. So that would be, it's like that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for those, two resolutions.
The resolution for need, determination of need would be 2021-14. And the, for reimbursement, it would be 2021-15.
That was a motion. I'll second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Two, zero.
County Farm. I don't have anything for the county farm.
The only thing that I can say with regards to the county farm, two appraisals were received that we discussed at next meeting, and I believe seven, eight proposals were received. There's probably one of them, but hopefully we can discuss that at next meeting when we have further contingency. Kevin's dealing with that, and Roy's got COVID, so that's the plan with that right now. So, appreciate everybody submitting.
I have a proposal from Baird to be the underwriter for a bonds.
Did you have any questions, Doug?
No, I reviewed that. I'm okay with it.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to accept those.
I'll second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
What else do you have?
I don't have anything else.
You sure?
I am.
Seems like it's half an hour. Now, I wish it was only half an hour.
I know.
It wasn't. So, if you have anything else you'd like to remember?
I do not.
Lisa? I guess. There is nothing?
Salute.
Two, zero. Thank you.